Good morning and thank you for joining us for a meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. We will begin today's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. We will be led today by Supervisor Shucklan.
Please point me to the United Nations flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, maybe you can do it. Item number one on today's agenda is Board of Supervisors matters. I'll start with Supervisor Crocker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, last Wednesday, had a RCRC Executive Committee meeting and in addition to discussing potential types of candidates for our president position, we also had a lengthy discussion on a broadband initiative that staff has been working on to get into that arena from a rural standpoint. There was, it was a very lengthy discussion. Ultimately, it was tabled to be discussed in a couple of weeks. Further, staff was going to get back and look at some additional options. There's some federal and state funding that we're looking at applying for and part of that would require creating a new structure, a new nonprofit that would ultimately run that in partnership with a local government consortium out of Utah that is doing something similar. And it's, it's very promising and ultimately Tulare County would be one of the big winners, if not the biggest winner in, out of the RCRC counties if that were to move forward. So, I'm very supportive of that effort and I know we have, there's quite a bit of staff that at RCRC that have put a lot of, a lot of work into it, a lot of good due diligence and so they're, they're advocating for it as well. So, hopefully we can have enough support in a couple of weeks to move forward with that and I think that'd really help us considering the amount of people that are working from home, young people that are schooling from home and the need for rural broadband is more than ever. Thursday, I had an air district meeting and we did waive fees for both the Creek Fire victims and for SQF complex. So, for the rebuilding, there will not, as well as giving discretion to the district as far as, you know, how long that period is to really, and the emphasis is just to help people out in a, in a, in a big time of trouble. Ultimately, I think it's really going to depend. Not everyone would be required to have some type of air district fee, but if there is large-scale cleanup, then there possibly could be by those companies. So, I'm just making sure that we have options in place to, again, to not put any additional burdens on folks as they're doing that. Also had NACO Western Region call last Thursday and San Joaquin Valley Blueprint meeting. Both progressing. NACO, they had some good, some good information about the progress of the vaccine and what the Department of Defense is, how they're coordinating with states, which I know are, are then coordinating with our Public Health Department as far as distribution. And I think it's, it was a good reminder as far as part of the Operation Warp Speed was paying to make sure that there were vaccines or, you know, large-scale vaccines are being developed currently so that for deployment purposes, whenever the, the vaccines that ultimately get approved, that they'll already be at some large-scale capacity. It may not be at complete scale, but it would be, there wouldn't need to be a ramp-up period. Last Friday, we had SJVIA meeting. Overall, good progress. Things are still moving in a, in a very positive direction and we increased our goal as far as some of our reserve amounts. Yesterday, we had a TCAG, TCTA and TCRTA meeting. TCRTA, we created some committees focused in on mission statement where some of the two big things moving forward and, and one of the committees that we created was a committee to begin the process of searching for a permanent executive director right now. TCAG is serving in an interim role and we've also partnered with the city of Porterville to help supplement, but we're looking for a, a permanent full-time position to, to really lead that, that JPA forward. This week, NACO is hosting a federal policy summit virtually and I will be attending. That is all day Wednesday and Thursday. And I know Dr. Burks is planning on attending one of the sessions. We've got a lot of different federal policymakers, cabinet-level folks, under secretaries from all different portions. There's a specific section on public lands and, and other very good things that are in there. So, I'm looking forward to some of the information coming from that. And that's all I have.
All right. We'll go to Supervisor Townsend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone. This last week, on Wednesday, the 14th, had a, a meeting with Porterville Unified School District and Habitat for Humanity. We're trying to set up a partnership on a cross pathways home project. We worked a little bit together before, but never a full collaboration. And so, this was a meeting with all of the, the partners and looking to, looking to find habitat recipients or homeowners for this home and yet have the Porterville Unified students build the home, design and build the home and maybe even be involved in some of the selection process for the homeowners. So, it'll be a great model if we can pull it off and I think we're going to be able to. It'll be a great model for community involvement and student involvement, volunteerism in general and then it's a hands-on, you know, work-based learning for everyone involved. So, it would be, you know, the people building the house, they'll even bring some students in to help do the, the interiors. As that goes, they'll bring their business students to put together budgets and things. So, right across all of the pathways. So, kind of excited about that, working out and getting another committed Habitat for Humanity homeowner into another place in Porterville. And then on the 15th, I was really happy to have the first follow-up call with the USDA and the US Forest Service regarding the US Forest Service taking more of a lead in our forest management, especially with what's happened with, with the fires here recently. It's become, that topic has risen to the top. And during a, a recent San Joaquin Valley Regional Policy Council meeting, we had discussed this with Department of the Interior and with the White House about what could we do to get the Forest Service to take a more active lead. So, this call was the first follow-up call to sort of get that ball rolling and was able to talk to, to someone that handles timber sales and things in the, in the Forest Service and we brainstormed a little bit over the phone to come up with the next steps to get there. So, be looking forward to, to those things coming up. And, and then on Friday, the Ag Ventures were the International Ag Center fundraiser to help teach students about agriculture throughout the, the county. It's been ongoing for a long time and I know Supervisor Vanderpool, Chairman Vanderpool is involved with this typically. This time with, with the meetings they had, he was not able to, to do it. So, I was able to go to that tournament and bring a couple of guys from our CAO's office. We had John Hess and Justin Adams, or Justin Avala, I should say, go out and help and we had a great time and represented the, the county on that. So, I'm not sure what their total, hey, we did good. We did good. It was, yeah, Amy says uh-oh, but it was, it was good. We did, we did respectably. So, that was good. And then on Monday, as was mentioned, we had our TCAG, TCTA meeting with all of us attending. And one thing that kind of came to the top for me was Director Smalley reported that the advance of funds that this board had approved earlier this year has already, because of the way they were able to partner and collaborate on projects, has already saved over a million dollars. And so, that was what we had hoped would happen is by getting some of these, some of this funding released early and starting to get on some of the roads early, that it would save money in the long run. And just the way that the collaboration worked has already saved that million dollars. So, also a couple of things that perk my ears up were the projects that are coming up on 190, Highway 190 and Highway 65. And so, those are all good to see, that those are in the hopper for, for our district. Tonight, I'm going to run out this evening and speak to a group, kind of brainstorm with a group from Zion Lutheran out in Terabella. They're wanting to help with the remaining evacuees of the Sequoia SQF fire. And so, we're just going to kind of brainstorm how they can do that and partner with, there's Lighthouse Chapel in Springville is working still with evacuees and the Red Cross and try to get some more collaboration and see what they can do. And then Thursday, I'm going to head up to Posey along with several representatives from the county and other agencies and have a town hall meeting up at the fire station in Posey. They've been looking to get that together for quite a while and we typically have one in the hot springs, but we're going to go up the hill a little bit further and have that in Posey and talk to that group about what's, what's going on on their part of the mountain. And then just to wrap up, two great things happened this, this week, since the last time we met and that was, we were able to get the FEMA declaration, disaster declaration for the SQF fire. We were added to that. The President, President did make that declaration and I, I just wanted to, again, thank, you know, Jason Britt, our CAO, for helping and all the staff and county council. Also Senator Grove helped us tremendously with getting the Cal OES to, to sign off on that before it went to the federal level. And then Congressman McCarthy, Nunes and Lamalfa, all of those helped to sign a letter to ask the, the President to add Tulare County to that declaration. So, thanks to all of them and that came through. So, there are some, there is some disaster funding that's being made available along with SBA loans to help with the folks who, who have suffered loss. So, that was a, a big win for our area. And the other is after quite a bit of struggling back and forth, this board had prepared a letter to the state and then also a couple of weeks ago, the resolution asking, among other things, that the state would release the remainder of the CARES Act funding that we had sitting at the state. There was about 24.46 million still there and our CAO reported that that was released to us so that we have been made whole on all of the, the CARES funding. So, that's also a, a great victory and thanks to everyone who fought so hard for that at the CAO's office and county council. And again, Senator Grove helped us on that one. McCarthy, Nunes and Lamalfa all helped us. So, the same group and so we, our thanks to them for both of those. And that's about it, Mr. Chair.
All right. Supervisor Shucklan.
Thank you. Last Thursday was the kickoff of our third annual book festival. So, you can go online and there were some great stories told and whatnot. So, you can go back on the Tulare County Library Facebook page and, and see those if you have any kids or grandkids. I also was attendee virtually for our SJVIA meeting. On Saturday night, I virtually emceed the Source LGBT+ Centers Escape to Oz Gala. And once again, I don't know if this is the most ever collected, but this is the second virtual fundraiser that I've attended and they raised over $70,000. So, there's a niche there somewhere. So, good for them for being creative and, and raising those much-needed funds for the services and programs that they provide. Yesterday, we had our K-T AAA meeting, also TCAG. And then last night, I attended the Visalia City Council meeting where they gave an update to their council on homeless efforts in the city of Visalia and Chaz Felix and myself, our homeless initiatives program coordinator, attended and I gave an update to the Visalia City Council as far as what is happening in the county with our homeless efforts. Today at four o'clock, I will be joining the, a joint meeting of the League of Women Voters and the AAUW to give a state-of-the-county type update. And then tomorrow, we have, no, yeah, Wednesday, our task force on homelessness and that is always broadcast live on Tulare County HHSA Facebook page. That is at 1:30. I think, I think that might, other than the Planning Commission, might be the only committee that we broadcast live on Facebook for accessibility and for folks to be involved. So, that's it.
All right. Thank you. Supervisor Valero.
Great morning Tulare County. So, last Wednesday Denise England, our Water Resource Director and I, had a very promising and successful meeting with the President of the State Water Resource Control Board, Joaquin Esquivel, along with his staff. Mr. Esquivel heard about the East Arosi and Arosi strife directly from us and assured us that change is on its way. We appreciate the State Water Board for carving out time to listen to our push for consolidation. On Thursday, I traveled to Alpo and Pixley for the ribbon-cutting park improvement. And so, thank you to Chairman Vanderpool for allowing me to participate and for the county's investments in our green spaces across Tulare County. That day, I also participated in a food distribution opportunity out in London. So, thank you to the Parenting Network for inviting me and thank you to the Hodges London Community Center for your tireless efforts in making sure that the residents, that residents are supported and engaged. We were able to provide food and supplies to over 200 families. Partner agencies included Proteus Inc., Tulare County Tobacco Prevention, California Rural Legal Assistance, Family Healthcare Network and Anthem Blue Cross. Additional events include Traver, Delph Colony and Sultana in the weeks to come. And then a huge shout-out to our Sheriff's Office for your food distribution program in Arosi last week as well. Yesterday, I participated, as two other colleagues of mine did, in the Kings Tulare Area Agency on Aging, our board meeting. So, some highlights of that meeting include the approval of the California Department of the Aging Medicare Improvement for Patients and Providers Act contract, the CDA contract amendment to the Title V Senior Information Community Service Employment Program and the CDA one-time-only increase funding allocation. We also had our TCAG meeting as mentioned yesterday and I'm thankful for all the projects getting done throughout Tulare County, some of which are in collaboration with Caltrans and our Resource Management Agency. This week, I'm interviewing students for the hashtag LEAD program. So, youth cohorts from Porterville, Farmersville, Tulare, Visalia, Cutler, Arosi and Dinuba spend the year learning and growing via governance, leadership and youth development. The hashtag LEAD program is designed to prepare future Tulare County leaders by giving them the opportunity to engage with local professionals, participate in service learning community projects and visit college campuses. community projects, and visit college campuses. So hashtag LEAD participants also have the opportunity to learn communication skills, conflict resolution, strategic planning, and time management. I'll just share that from the responses I heard last night already, our future looks bright. So many talented, talented students eager to make a difference in our communities. I have my regular Government Affairs Committee meeting on Wednesday, where I will share county updates to the Dinuba Chamber of Commerce. I will also be speaking to students in Political Science Five via Zoom, discussing participation in local government to C O S, College of Sequoia students. And then on Thursday, a group of individuals will reconvene for and prepare to transition our in-person conference, which we had all worked on last year for Fathering the Fatherless. We will be moving that to virtual instead. So we were supposed to have our conference in late March of this year, but canceled due to COVID. So Fathering the Fatherless will discuss ways in which organizations can work together to help support, engage, and understand the challenges of our fatherless generation. And then more information on this will be forthcoming. And then on Friday, I will be explaining California's propositions to Woodlake High School's civic class. And then I also want to give a big shout out to all the mail carriers in our communities who work hard to maintain the security and safety of our ballots. You are awesome and duly appreciated. And just a reminder, I will be hosting two virtual meetings, one on elections and then the other on reopening our schools safely. The elections virtual meeting will take place on October 29 at 2:00 P. M. with staff from the elections office. And then the reopening of schools, where we will have a superintendent, a teacher, a parent on a panel. And that meeting will take place on October 28 at 2:00 P. M. I also want to note here that I will need to leave at around 9:35, which is a good 15 minutes from now, this morning, to make my way to Cutler Arosi Sports Complex ribbon cutting ceremony. This was the last project that we undertook as a team. And I have been asked by the Superintendent of Cutler Arosi Joint Unified Yolanda Valdez to speak at this ribbon cutting ceremony. So like I said, I will need to leave at about 9:35. And that is all I have, Chairman.
Okay, great.
Forgot to thank the female carriers also. You just said the male carriers. I know, I know. I'm kidding.
All right. Well, thank you to my colleagues for basically covering everything there was possible to cover during Board of Supervisors Matters today. Couple of things, I thought the K T AAA and T CAG meetings went very well yesterday. And I do appreciate General Services and Parks, our Parks folks and employees, for the work that they did to put on two fantastic ribbon cutting events last week in both Pixley and Alpa. Already, you can see the impact of those investments based on the number of people who actually recognized the work being done and the investment being made in those green spaces and open spaces, which in both cases are some of the only recreation opportunities a lot of youth and community members have in those communities, because people were already enjoying them and reaching out thanking prior to the ribbon cutting of those parks. So that's a very good indicator of success and going to be used highly in the future. And I just encouraged everyone at the event to make sure that we respect those investments so that they last well into the future. One public meeting I wanted to highlight that's taking place this week, the International Agri Center Board Meeting, in addition to all the other meetings that my colleagues highlighted. The International Agri Center will be having their monthly board meeting this Wednesday at 4:00 P. M. at the International Agri Center. And again, I want to thank them for their collaboration and public-private partnership to help make the Commercial Interchange Project possible in Tulare. That's going to be truly a transformational project that's going to give the city of Tulare first-class freeway interchanges on the north end of the community and the south end of the community. And I think that it's really going to help further infrastructure and growth in the community of Tulare that I represent. So very, very anxious and looking forward to that happening in the future. Scheduled to break ground in 2021. Okay, we will now move on and take up item number two on our agenda, which is a request to receive an update from the Health and Human Services Agency on COVID-19 status and response efforts in Tulare County. Director Lutz.
Good morning, Chair members of the board, C A O and Council. Here this morning for the weekly update on COVID for Tulare County. As of this morning, we're at 17,317 cases. So that's up 341 since our last report, and roughly a 2% increase. That 2% seems to be where we've been hovering at for a while. Last week, we were 2.2. This week, too. Nice to see it slowly ticking down. Obviously, want to see it going faster, but it did, we do see that ticking down. Unfortunately, we did see 10 additional deaths last, this last week. Current numbers are at 279 total deaths. And our recoveries are at 16,473. I'm happy to note this morning that our weekly cases are at 316 for the, for this weekend ending, which is down 21% from the prior week, finally moving us past at least that, that stubborn 400 range that we've been sitting at. This would be our lowest weekly total in eight, in 18 weeks. So that's at least some very positive news. Not what we all want, which is putting us in the red tier yet, but certainly going in the direction that we want to see again. And so our case rate, and it's important to note, the case rate's lagged. So this is seven-day average with a seven-day lag. So really, this is looking at last week's cases. Our case rate stayed at the 9.2 per 100,000. The state's base calculation was 9.1. Based on our testing volume, which was above state average, we were adjusted by a factor of 0.98 or 2%, making our adjusted case rate 8.9. So we'll continue to watch that over this week. Preliminary are non-lagged. Rate is showing at 7.8 right now. But again, as more tests come in and we're looking at episode date rather than report date, you would see that number start to tick up. Our testing positivity is at 5.1%. And also some good news in terms of our health equity metric, while still definitely higher than our average. Our lowest quartile of the H P I testing positivity was at 6.7% for this, for this last week. And then our effective, at this point, is increased to 1.03, recognizing that again, cases are more or less at a stable range of, of spread. We want to continue to see it go down, not up. But, but again, that's one of the, the metrics and not the one that we're primarily focused on. It, I just want to note, it is positive to see that we're seeing cases going into that territory of, of seven where we want to be. But we do still have quite a bit of work to do. If we don't look at the state's case rate adjustment, we would need to be seeing 32 positive cases a day roughly on average for us to get to that, that seven per 100,000. Last week's average for context was 45. So that kind of gives us an idea of, of, we still have definite room that we need to go to get to the seven. The testing volume, as we well know now, is a double-edged sword. If we fall behind on testing volume, it's going to hurt us. So testing really is crucially important to continue to focus on and push. When I get to that section, I, I feel like we are making some good progress there, some good programs in the works and some updates from the state's new lab that's going to be coming online next month. I, I do want to note though, and going back to our case rate and compliance, is we are still seeing a frustrating trend and actually an increase in businesses that are refusing to comply with state guidelines. And I think that the challenge is, we all completely understand the frustration. I certainly want to get my kids back in the classroom, certainly want to go see a movie, eat inside at a restaurant. But the challenge is where we have the non-compliance, it is really slowing our ability as a county to move forward. And we do have this case where some bad actors do contribute to holding the overall group back in getting our kids back in school, including our seventh to 12th graders, and also resuming more indoor types of activities that we would like to do, restaurants, gyms, et cetera. So we, we know from our contact tracing, we are already seeing positives coming from some of these types of larger gatherings within the community or businesses. So again, the, the caution here is to, you know, recognize that all of us are, are reliant on the other, and we all need to work together.
So you're saying not only from family gatherings and whatnot, but actually restaurants? Or, I mean, what type of bad actors are we talking about, restaurants?
Restaurants or gatherings that are happening in the community that are falling under some of the exemption processes of swap meets or what have you, where we're seeing positives come back. Vosler Farms is another area where I know they've had large crowds going out there. So just recognizing that the community events, where we still have the level of, of community spread that we have, do pose risk. And it's that importance of masks, sanitizing, distancing. So that, you know, again, while by no means an assurance that people aren't going to get COVID, it certainly helps mitigate that risk.
And some of these, like you've mentioned swap meets or whatnot, do they require a permit from the, the county to hold these?
Some might require, like swap meets certainly could require like conditional use permits for their locations. But generally, if, if they have food on site, they're obviously going to have to go through environmental health. But otherwise, many of them really kind of fall within that gray area. And the, the challenge really is, we can provide guidance, and we do when they're operating those events. But it's really then up to the operators to consistently enforce those rules and follow it. And I think that's where we, we're running into.
They're not enforcing, and they know we don't, if, if we did enforce, we wouldn't even have the manpower to enforce, correct?
We wouldn't, no. I mean, it really would have to be, you know, a combination of it's in cities, our city partners to assist, but also certainly environmental health has some enforcement when it comes to the restaurant side of things. We do have a lot of restaurants that are opening indoors, just ignoring really the, the guidelines and doing indoor dining. At this point, we continue to try and educate and provide referrals to the, to the state strike team.
Thank you.
So moving on, hospitalizations continue to kind of be within that stable range. We're down 3% to 31 this week. And then on state activity, the, the biggest update since last week really is about the state Super Lab in Valencia, which is their Perkins Elmer contract. We had a, a presentation yesterday by the, the team the state put together in anticipation of the November 1 established go-live date. Initially, they're looking at doing 40,000 to 50,000 tests per day is their daily capacity, with then ramping up to that 150,000 per day that, that was originally promised. The, to prepare for that, the state's rolling out a number of new agreements or processes to support the collection sites or resources. And they're, they're trying to build a little more flexibility and local control, which of course has a, as an alternative challenge that I'll get to. So the primary areas, one is supporting existing testing capacity. So looking at our Optum sites, the ability to move those when we're actually utilizing the full capacity up to 165 tests for, per day instead of the 132 that they're currently at. And then just increasing the, the capacity of testing overall. It also is looking at establishing new sites, such as pedestrian fixed sites for walk-ups, drive-through fixed sites, traveling testing teams, or large mobile collection vehicles. All are, are great ideas. I think that the challenges really come down to local implementation. So the state's looking for a few pilot counties to begin early to mid next week before that official go-live to be able to kind of test the flow process and, and delivery mechanics. In, in hearing, you know, parsing through this, the state presentation yesterday, it seems very clear that this is really kind of the state's medium-term strategy to ride out COVID. And in so much as, we know that there are some changes that are set to occur toward the end of this year. The Optum site contracts are, are set through November 30. The state hasn't indicated yet whether they will keep all of them. And I think what they're doing is evaluating site by site and county by county based on plans. What's, what's notable though is, this is a move away from the 100% state-funded collection site model. And instead, what they're really looking for is counties to come to the table with basically submitting a mini grant or a site proposal per location to identify how, how are you going to do this? The, the key piece there, of course, is the state's providing the testing capacity. They're providing the testing kits. But it's going to then be up to us and our partners to be having the actual staff to collect it. It's not clear at this point how much additional state staffing might be available outside of what we know we have with the Optum sites through November. So the, the state has mentioned to, to put a finer point on it, is that they are interested in county cost sharing for those collection locations. And it's likely that the number of approved collection sites in each county will be influenced by how much cost sharing counties are willing to do. So our, our hope is to look at blending those CARES Act dollars, the E L C funds that we're already receiving, and hopefully submit a proposal where we can also leverage the Optum serve staffing, because we don't want to lose the state provided resource and, and really try and leverage that capacity. So that was presented to counties last night. The, obviously, there's going to be a lot of moving parts in the coming week or two. And the team has a meeting this afternoon at noon with the testing, one of the state vendors to be talking through logistics and plans and identifying our initial sites to be used for this program. And then just also wrapping up on testing, we, I want to, we are seeing some positive results. And particularly on some of the newer testing strategies, we're seeing our, like Woodlake event, our collections are significantly up, out at those sites. Our, we're, we're partnering with the promotoras. We're partnering with our local healthcare providers. And we're starting to see more people doing the testing at those sites where we really want to see them doing it. So that's, that's positive. The challenge now is about this long-term, large-scale volume that we're trying to work on. Last week, we put out materials encouraging asymptomatic people to get tested. And unfortunately, I would say reactions were pretty mixed. It was our, certainly our number one item on our Facebook feed last week. But there is a pretty prevalent trend toward people not wanting to get tested. Amongst factors that seem to be cited were people tired of getting tested on a regular basis, those that are doing so already, concerns that we're really manipulating the numbers by encouraging asymptomatic people to get tested. And I, I do want to point out in that, that it's, it's important that people remember that 40 to 50% of people, at least is what the best estimates are through CDC and other organizations, is 40, 50% of the people with COVID are asymptomatic carriers, but can still spread the illness. So an asymptomatic testing strategy isn't, is really trying to have a broader level of surveillance and ability to, to identify potentially sick people and reduce the spread quickly. So that's the rationale for why we feel the asymptomatic push is important. We also still have the issue that we know of, that vocalized distrust of a government-run testing We also still have the issue that we know of, that vocalized distrust of a government-run testing facility, which is why we're really trying to work with our community partners. We're looking now at reaching out to our chambers and seeing if there might be an opportunity there to align with kind of the essential workforce and encourage those essential workforces to be starting a regular testing routine, such as, you know, every two weeks or so getting employees tested. That helps protect the employees, it also helps boost the volume, but it also will ideally catch cases early and try and reduce the outbreaks. So a lot of movement there, and hopefully we'll start to see some progress. But recognizing that Facebook post and the feedback last week, we know there's still a lot of work that we have to do broadly within the community to encourage more broad-scale testing. And then finally, on school waivers, we really, I think last week, particularly after the report of kind of where we have been stagnant, the floodgates opened and we had a lot of waivers come in last week. And I really want to commend the school team because they worked through this weekend to try and catch up on all of the waivers. At this point, we're with 30 schools that have been approved for waivers, that's up 14 since last Tuesday. And then we also have 53 schools that are pending revisions. Of those 53, 28 of them are Visalia Unified, 10 of them Porterville Unified, and then a mix of other schools, both public and private. So all of those have been, all those schools have been given initial feedback on their waivers. They're making their adjustments, and we'll continue to move those along at the state as quickly as we can. And I think that was the end of my report unless there are other questions for me.
So Tim, I have a couple of questions and comments I'd like to make. So first of all, great report, very thorough. Thank you for all the information, you covered a lot of subject areas as usual. One item I wanted to ask about, 7th to 12th grade students. What are we doing? What can we do? I know that given the purple tier, things are kind of restricted. But I know that there are several that are operating under a day camp model or trying to find some other mechanism that may work for them. But I want to make sure that our advocacy for our youth doesn't just stop at the K through 6 or pre-K through 6. Got to look out for the 7th through 12th as well. So if you would comment as to what options or what your outlook is for that population. And then two, any information about inpatient psychiatric numbers as well amongst the youth? I know that was something you highlighted in previous weeks, and I think that's something that we need to really continue to focus upon because that's a primary driver, is that 7th to 12th grade population and being isolated socially and outside of the school environment. So if you'd like to comment on that, that'd be great.
Thank you, great point Supervisor. So yeah, unfortunately, under the purple tier, the options are far more limited for the 7th to 12th grade. The day camps are one option, but that is far more limiting, particularly in terms of not having a credentialed teacher in front of those students. A better model, but it's for a much smaller niche, is really doing the cohorts where we have our high-needs or at-risk or youth that are really failing the system and need those additional supports. Schools can bring them back under the cohort guidance. So those are the best bets for both, for both public and private to try and pursue if they want to bring those students back on a limited basis. The best option continues obviously to be us getting to that red tier and opening that up. Recognizing, and then the second part to your point and the very strong nexus is, this is a group that really is falling between the cracks here. And while we continue to push up to the state in terms of our concern what we're seeing locally, there still are not really strong, concrete solutions that come down. I know our mental health team is working very closely with the school districts, our partners to really stress extra outreach, supports, and engagement, recognizing that if we, while we can't necessarily change one of the major causal factors at this point, we can at least try and introduce some interventions to help. I'm happy at least that we're seeing a decline in the number of new hospitalizations. And now I don't want to downplay that everything is good. I think what we saw is kind of that large rise for those students that were experiencing trauma. They're still going to be receiving services. So certainly, our levels of service are much higher this year for those students. And we continue to watch the new placements. We're at 7 for October now, which is a lot better than the 33 that we were seeing from September.
That's great.
So we continue to really coordinate services there, recognizing that that is a group that needs strong advocacy right now.
Okay, thank you. I'm really glad to hear that decrease because even though there's not a lot of optimism until we get to that red tier for breaking the social isolation, at least we're seeing the hospitalizations decrease. On the school note, since I just spoke about the 7th to 12th grade population, really am happy to hear that we've got 30 schools that are operating under the waiver system. That means that they've found a way to bring students back to school safely and in a healthy way because that is a very comprehensive and complex plan that has to be approved and adhered to by these schools to protect both students and staff. So they've found a way to do it, it's in the best interest of the kids, and I'm really, really happy to hear that. And that's truly indicative of the need and also schools realizing they can do it when you see there's 53 additional schools that are pending. Very, very happy to see that because, as I've said from the beginning, there's really very few in this state advocating for the youth. But when you see these numbers, you know, here in Tulare County, we're doing what we can to help benefit the youth of our county, and I think that's very important. I also wanted to recognize and thank you for your effort to partner with different community organizations, community health providers. I think that that helps to really get out to those isolated areas that the state is very concerned about, but we all are too, in making sure that people are having access to being tested so that, you know, we really are making sure all of our efforts are reaching out throughout the community. And I think that's a big reason why our core tiles are not as negatively affected as we originally thought they could be because we have such great partnerships and efforts reaching out throughout this county to make sure that all areas are being tested and have access to services. So great work there. And then lastly, on the asymptomatic pushback or the Facebook post, whatever, I think it's important to point out, there's a reason that the counties around us are in the red tier, and some maybe even going back to the purple tier, possible in the near future, who knows? I don't hope for that for anyone, but they have had a strategy of testing asymptomatic individuals since the beginning. We have not, we've tried to follow the rules here in Tulare County. I think that's important for our Health and Human Services Agency and Public Health Team to be doing that. But at the same time, we know the strategy as to how we're going to get to the red tier. We have to continue to test asymptomatic people, not just because it's likely their tests are going to be negative, but also the fact that asymptomatic individuals can still be carriers. I think that's very important to point out. So let's continue to spread the word, get the message out there. Test early, test often, and if we can get in with the essential workers, which, you know, the vast majority of our county is considered essential workforce because of the industries we work in primarily, I think that's going to be a real win for the county. So thank you very much again, kudos to your team. We appreciate all the effort that the Public Health Team has put forth. I think it's really something to recognize and keep working hard at it. Supervisor Townsend.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks, Tim, for that report as usual, very thorough and informative. And thanks again, I want to add to what the Chair said about the school waivers. That's a tremendous increase, and it seems like that maybe the schools were out there testing the water a little bit with the earlier waivers. So it's really heartening to see so many that have applied. And thanks for, like you mentioned, with the staff working overtime to get those out as much as possible so they can get them back. And then a quick question on the hospitals as we are moving into the flu season. And you note that some hospitals are starting to mention the flu and hospitalizations. Will the testing separate that out? If somebody gets tested and they have the flu, will it just show up as the flu? And do we keep those numbers separate? I think the hospitalizations are probably going to be mixed because we're just looking at available beds, available ICU, but will the numbers be split between flu and COVID?
So yeah, they, and in fact, I've heard a lot of discussions about doing a kind of a dual test kit that will test for both at the same time, but they are testing separately. There's, our epidemiological folks have, it's called, I think it's the syndromic surveillance. Again, our epi folks are amazing. They have a lot of things that when they have admissions to hospitals, they're tracking those symptoms and looking at kind of our baseline over prior years and seeing the spikes. So we do watch that closely and definitely separate out entirely COVID from flu. Certainly, it's possible somebody's going to come in with both, given that it is flu season. But we do watch that closely, and for the flus that they can do the testing for, obviously, we would just count that as the flu. We could start to provide some of that information if the board feels that would be helpful to kind of see the uptick of flu cases versus COVID cases. I know we're already capturing it. Just recognizing the report grows and grows, and I, you know, 13 pages and...
Book next time.
But yes, so we do track that, and we'd be happy to provide it. But yes, the numbers for hospitalizations would only be COVID as the cause for that hospitalization.
Okay, thanks very much again.
All right, Supervisor Shuckling.
Tim, did we ever hear back from the Unified Support Team? That was, is that what it was called? The state came in for a couple of days and had the meetings with a lot of people? Did we ever hear anything back on that or what's...
So we do occasionally have a meeting with the Unified Support Team. There was one last week, still waiting on a report. We've seen a couple draft iterations of that report. But even that's kind of hit or miss where I think they're at version 5 now. I don't know that we saw versions 4 or 3. So it's kind of hit or miss, unfortunately, no, we haven't.
We're not getting any support from the support team?
Yeah, it is, I will say unfortunately, still fragmented. And I don't want to take away all of the significance because it has been helpful in a number of cases, like Department of Agriculture has been a really good partner at that table. And usually if, certainly if our Ag Commissioner reaches out through those channels, they're very quick. But there are definitely some weaker points, and we have yet to see a report.
Thank you.
All right, anything further? All right, thank you very much. I appreciate the update, Tim, very thorough again, and thank you to you and your team. All right, item three on our agenda is a request to present a proclamation recognizing the week of October 23rd through 31st, 2020 as Red Ribbon Week in Tulare County. I'm going to be presenting a proclamation, but first I would like to call forward for a presentation because I know they always do a great job putting together a video or presentation for this event from the Tulare County Office of Education. Tony, if you'd like to go ahead and start, and I do want to recognize too, we have the highly esteemed and rarely seen Superintendent of the Tulare County Office of Education here with us today, Tim Hire. Thank you for coming, appreciate it.
That's it? Yep. Okay. Good morning, everyone. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here this morning and present. My name is Tony Kevin, I'm with the Tulare County Office of Education. I'm the manager for the prevention side of the choices programs. And the Red Ribbon Committee has asked me to be here today to address you on their behalf. For the 11th straight year, the Tulare County Office of Education and Tulare County Health and Human Services Agency are collaborating to spread the Red Ribbon Week message throughout Tulare County. A special thank you to our partners. I would like to thank Visalia Unified School District, Pulse After School Program, NCAD, Family Healthcare Network, and Turning Point. The Red Ribbon Planning Committee consists of community partners and many motivated youth representing local efforts and prevention programs throughout Tulare County. Red Ribbon Week has become one of the most visible prevention awareness campaigns observed annually and gives opportunity for schools, organizations, and communities to make a visible stand against alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs and show their commitment to be a drug-free lifestyle through the symbol of a Red Ribbon Week. At this time, I'd like to show a quick video of what's going to be aired on ABC 30 to promote Red Ribbon Week. We ready?
Don't miss our three-part video series on Red Ribbon Week, the nation's longest-running anti-drug campaign. Brought to you by the Tulare County Office of Education and Tulare County Health and Human Services Agency. This series will explore how the celebration started and the role DEA Agent Kiki Camarena played in fighting the war on drugs. Follow us on Facebook as we roll out the series beginning October 23rd. Until then, stay drug-free.
So this year, the committee members selected an adopted national theme week, Be Happy, Be Brave, Be Drug-Free, as the official theme for Tulare County. At this time, we'd like to represent each of the board members with a red ribbon mask and bracelet. So if you'd like to come up, or do you want me to pass the bag?
Tony, we can go ahead.
Yeah, maintain the social distance and just throw it, yeah.
Be like it's student assembly, we'll just throw it out. So if you need more, please let us know. You can get ahold of Mr. Hire or myself, and we have more masks and wristbands for everyone. So also, we have a three-part series of videos that will be aired throughout Red Ribbon Week. The first one will air on Monday, November 26. Second one will air Wednesday, the 28th, and the final video will air on Friday, the 30th. These videos, we hope, will educate students, teachers, and parents on the dangers of drugs, alcohol, and tobacco use, and will be displayed throughout the week of Red Ribbon. We hope to be back at the convention center next year. Normally, we're there with 11 to 1,500 students throughout Tulare County. A lot of vendors are there promoting healthy lifestyles, kids being kids. And due to the COVID issue, we'll be doing that through the videos. In closing, we continue to thank the county board of supervisors for their support, service, and commitment to our drug prevention programs. We ask that you continue supporting students and families in discovering the many resources and activities to stay drug-free, not just for a week, but for a life. So thank you very much, Board.
All right.
I see these are made in China, so I hope they're...
Well, if...
Close these masks.
If Superintendent Hire would like to come forward, and if, I don't know, is Dana here? Okay, good, thanks Dana. If you guys want to come forward, I'd like to have you up here when I present this. And I will put on my mask after I'm done reading this. So it's my pleasure to present this proclamation on behalf of the Board of Supervisors to you, and thank you for your effort to promote Red Ribbon Week. What an important week and what an important effort despite all that's going on in our society today, whether it's election-related, COVID-related. We need to remember the importance of promoting a drug-free lifestyle amongst our youth, especially as they form their habits and long-term futures. But even amongst our adult populations as well, spreading the anti-drug awareness and lifestyle is very important. So this proclamation recognizes the week of October 23rd through 31st, 2020 as Red Ribbon Week here in Tulare County. Whereas alcohol and drug abuse in the United States has reached epidemic stages, no lockdowns or anything for alcohol or drugs yet, but... Whereas early substance abuse increases the likelihood of a person developing psychiatric disorders in his or her late twenties. And whereas it is imperative that sense, visible, unified, and preventative educational efforts by community members be launched to help eliminate the demand for drugs. And whereas the rates of past-year alcohol and illicit drug use were lower for youth who had seen or heard drug and alcohol prevention messages in the past year compared to youth who had not seen or heard drug or alcohol prevention messages at school. And whereas teens are affected by the influences in their lives such as families, neighborhood, school, and community. such as families, neighborhood, school, and community. When parents, educators, law enforcement, faith-based organizations, and community members unite in opposing illicit drugs, young people are much less likely to engage in drug use. And whereas, Red Ribbon Week will be celebrated both in Tulare County and throughout the United States during the week of October 23rd through 31st, 2020. And whereas, to help achieve this goal, the United States Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, the National Family Partnership, the Tulare County Office of Education, and the Tulare County Department of Mental Health, Alcohol and Other Drugs Division invite the community to participate in Red Ribbon Week 2020. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Tulare County Board of Supervisors does hereby recognize the week of October 23rd through 31st, 2020 as Red Ribbon Week in Tulare County and calls upon all citizens, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools to recommit to increasing awareness and drug prevention activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free community. Signed by Pete Vanderpool, myself, Amy Shucklian, Kyler Crocker, Eddie Valero, and Dennis Townsend. Thank you again very much for your efforts. Much appreciated. I'll even put on the mask if you get it. Hold up a bit.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Tony.
Couple of things. One, I would echo your sentiments, Tim Lutz and his staff, the partnership, the extra hours that the school staff have put in to help work with our superintendents and our school districts in the waiver process, the guidance on the small cohorts, the guidance and the working through some of the challenges early on with the day camps. I can't say enough about the time and the effort and the partnership that has grown out of this. Deeply appreciate their support and your support of them. And then I just want to say thank you for the letter and the resolution to our state leadership around changing the target. I sent what I would call a nastygram probably a month ago expressing the same concerns about a constantly moving target as well as the untimely nature in which we get information. There's announcements and then it's weeks before we get actual guidance and direction. And that makes it nearly impossible for our superintendents to plan for students to return to school, which we all want and we all know is the best place for them, both educationally and socially emotionally. So, I want to thank you for your support in that venture. Know that our educators are working as hard, if not harder than they ever have, to try to meet the needs of our students. And any support that you can give people on a regular daily basis, because parents are struggling as well, grandparents are getting involved and they're struggling, kids even are well-adjusted, most well-to-do, high-functioning kids are struggling under this current circumstance. So, I know we're all in this together and I just appreciate your support and partnership in getting kids and schools back to where they should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Sure appreciate you being here. Okay, this was a presentation. We will now move on, take up item four, which is public comments. I do have one request in front of me. Mr. Alberto Aguilar, please come forward. State your name and address for the record. Public comments, cannon will be limited to two, three minutes. Appreciate your comments.
Supervisor Pete Vanderpool and members of the Board of Supervisors, my name is Alberto Aguilar. And the reason that I'm here today is to urge all of you to support and comply with the recommendations of the 2019, 2020 Tulare County Grand Jury Report regarding the Tulare Public Cemetery District. The recommendations are as follows. One, an independent forensic audit of the Tulare Public Cemetery District should be conducted covering the last five years. Two, a complete restructuring of the Tulare Public Cemetery District policies, procedures, and internal controls to be implemented within the next 12 months. Three, the agenda be posted at least 72 hours in advance of any regularly scheduled meeting as required by the Brown Act. Four, transfer of endowment funds needs to be made on a regular basis. Five, the Tulare County Board of Supervisors consider exercising its authority under the applicable sections of the California Health and Safety Code 9026 with a view towards bringing the governance of the Tulare Public Cemetery District into compliance with generally accepted policies and state requirements. I am providing the Board of Supervisors today with a copy of my letter to the Chairman of the Board, Stephen Present, dated October 5, 2020, and a copy of my letter to the Tulare County District Attorney, Tim Ward, dated October 8, 2020. If you have any questions, I will be happy to answer them. There has been ongoing misuse of public funds. I have made all of you aware of it. I have gone ahead and I've had Supervisor Pete Vanderpool contacted District Attorney's Office as far back as January 2019. And it's still ongoing as of today. I am glad that the grand jury came in and they requested all the financial reports dating back to 2017. And what they found and what they came up with is the report that is now available to all of you. And I will be providing you with a copy of that report in case you haven't seen it. I'm also going to be providing you with a copy of my letters that I've submitted to our Chairman and to the District Attorney's Office. We need to go ahead and make sure that as individuals that are supposed to be doing the oversight and making sure that the money of the public is being spent in the way that it should be is being done in that manner. I thank you very much. And if you have any questions, my phone number is area code One more thing, I have hired an attorney because I am not able to go ahead and get the financial reports provided to me so that I can do my job. And it's pretty bad when you have to go ahead and hire an attorney to get information that all of you should be entitled to. Thanks again.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any additional public comments here from members of the audience today? Are there any public comments from members of the public who are participating via phone?
Mr. Chair, we do not have any public comments.
Okay. If there are no further comments, I will close the public comment period. And we can now take up the consent calendar, items five through 20. Are there any items board members wish to pull or correct on the consent calendar? Members of the public? All right, seeing no items for separate consideration, Chair will entertain a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Crocker, second by Supervisor Shucklian. Please vote. Motion passes four to zero with Supervisor Crocker, Vanderpool, Shucklian, and Townsend voting yes and Supervisor Valero not voting because he is not in attendance at this portion of the meeting. All right, we will move on now and we will take up our untimed portion of our meeting agenda and take up item 21. This is a request from the Sheriff's Department to approve the personnel resolution amending the fiscal year 2020, 2021 position allocation as follows. Come on, Gist, that's a long sentence for me to read. Are you going to take over for me?
I'm going to take over.
All right, good deal.
Good morning to all Chairman Vanderpool, Vice Chair Shucklian, Supervisors Crocker and Townsend, you know, the CEO Britt. And congratulations to County Council Jennifer Flores. Good morning. I don't plan on reading this verbatim, but my name is Mark Gist, Captain with the Sheriff's Office. I oversee personnel training, legal and internal affairs. The things that we practice at the Sheriff's Office, as you're all aware, is financial and fiscal responsibility, not only to the Board, but to our constituents and the community as a whole, including our employees. For the past 14 years, our fiscal unit has been operating with the same amount of personnel and yet our budget, including grants and accountability to a multitude of fiscal responsibilities, has doubled. Having said that, we would like respectfully request the Board to take under consideration and approve the addition of positions as follows. An accountant two, accountant three, and an account clerk. And I'll explain it a little bit later. We'd like to add a legal secretary. Having said that, we would like to delete two correctional deputy positions, one supervising account clerk and one paralegal position. Having said that, that'll also net the county or Sheriff's Office budget savings of a little over $12,000. And this will allow ongoing and current fiscal responsibility, better efficiency and improvement overall for the Sheriff's Office and its employees and respectfully, you know, our accountability and responsibility to the public and the Board. There'd be no net cost to the county in addition to what I've spoke on. No additional expenditures, especially with the savings. With regard to the legal secretary, what's happened over the past couple of years due to Assembly bills, Senate bills, government codes changing, been a plethora of PRA requests, requests from attorneys, both, you know, on the prosecution side and defense side, where we have doubled our workload for our existing legal secretary. So, it's become quite the challenge. And the timeliness is extremely important as we work with County Council on several matters as well. I know our workload has passed on also to County Council, so I'm sure they're kind of dealing with some similar situations with the additional amount of work. So, part of this is thinking into the future, being innovative as well with our sheriff. He always looks for efficiency and responsibility and accountability, and that's something that we're asking for today. I just would hope that you guys would take this in consideration as a need, not a want. And it'll take us into the future. You know, our budget's doubled in the last 14 years. Grant requests and oversight as well as employees. We've had a lot more employees over the last 14 years. So, we do work closely with the CAO's office also and we thank you for a lot of those exemption letters that we've put in. Most of our requests have been one-for-ones as far as someone leaving, retiring, resigning, whatever the case may be, just to get another individual to take that place. So, we're having a savings here. This is what we're asking for and I thank you for your time. Anyone have any questions?
Captain, would you just comment as to whether or not these positions that are being deleted are vacant or if they are filled? Would you just make that a public statement?
Yeah, currently, right now, what we're looking for, the ones to delete are currently vacant.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions or comments from board members? Members of the public? All right, the Chair will entertain a motion. Have a motion by Supervisor Shucklian, second by Supervisor Townsend. Please vote. Motion passes four to zero with Supervisors Crocker, Vanderpool, Shucklian, and Townsend voting in favor. Supervisor Valero is not voting because he is not in attendance at this portion of the meeting. Thank you for that item. Appreciate the presentation and hope that it does add to the flexibility and also the efficiency of the department.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we will now move on, take up item 22, which is board member request. At this time, board members may make a referral to staff to have a matter of business considered for a future agenda. Are there any such requests? Supervisor Townsend.
Mr. Chair, I would like to have us consider moving back at our moment of silence time to an invocation or prayer, or at least the option of that. Maybe have staff look into how we could work that out, where it would all be copestetic. My thought would be maybe to rotate between districts, one, two, three, four, five, and at each meeting. And one could say, okay, let's have a moment of silence. Or you could say, okay, let's pray. Or you could say, I defer to somebody else that maybe you've invited to come in and have a prayer invocation time. But I think, I know several years ago that that went away in a lot of meetings through some lawsuits, but I believe that the Supreme Court has settled it and reinstated it in many cases and I think it's just been left off here. So, I'd just like to have us take time to consider putting that back into the first of our meeting.
Thank you for that request. Any additional requests? All right, seeing none, I will look to County Council. Do we have need for a closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do have a need for closed session. We will hear items A through F in closed session and I do not anticipate any announcement out.
All right, well, thank you all for...
I have a...
Oh, go ahead. You have to read your...
Regarding closed session, I have a financial conflict of interest under Government Code Section 87100 regarding closed session, item F. I will not attend the closed session for item F and will not obtain or review any non-public information regarding the governmental decision. The clerk has requested to make this announcement part of the official public record of today's meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that disclosure. If there's nothing further, we will adjourn this Board of Supervisors meeting to closed session. Thank you to the members of the public for attending and participating today. Hope everyone stays healthy and well. Meeting adjourned to closed session.